Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the July tenth, two thousand and eighteen Board of Selectmen meeting. I'll read the agenda. Seven o'clock, Citizens Input. Seven-ten, Public Hearing, NPS LLC, Craft Sports and Entertainment, Taylor Swift Concerts. Seven-twenty-five, OJO Realty Investments LLC, Ripple Realty, Answer is Fitness, New Commercial Parking License. Seven-forty, Selectmen's Update. Seven-forty-five, Town Manager's Update. Seven-fifty, Assistant Town Manager's Update. Then we have action items, and then we will be going into executive session at the end of our regular meeting, and we will not come back into regular session. So with that, Leah.
We can leave the open.
Leah, you want to lead us in the pledge?
Yeah, sure.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, seven o'clock. George, are you here for Citizens Input?
No.
Seeing nobody for Citizens Import. Have to hold off a little bit on the public hearing. Want to do some action items? Get rid of those?
Yep.
Sure. All right, the first one. Move to accept a gift donation of sixty-two dollars to the Foxborough Historical Commission from Jocelyn Tripp and others for the General Historical Fund.
Second.
Motion made, seconded, and any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Move to accept a gift donation of one hundred and twenty-five dollars to the Foxborough Cultural Council from the Foxborough Moms Club.
Second.
Motion made, seconded, and any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Move to accept a gift donation of one thousand four hundred and five dollars to the Council on Aging Human Services from the Friends of Foxborough Seniors for the program held at the Senior Center.
Second.
Motion made, seconded, and any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Move to accept a gift donation of one hundred and twenty-five dollars to the Boyd Library from the Moms Club of Foxborough for use in the Children's Department.
Second.
Motion made, seconded, and any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
All right, we have two minutes to approve. So move to approve the Board of Selectmen Meeting Minutes from June twelfth, two thousand and eighteen.
Second.
Motion made, seconded, and any further discussion?
They had one comment. I don't know if it's on this one or the other one. I apologize. This is the six?
Six-twelve.
Six-twelve.
Yeah.
Just one blank. I'm good.
You're good on that one?
Yeah.
Okay.
Motion made, seconded, and all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Move to approve the Board of Selectmen Meeting Minutes from June twenty-sixth, two thousand and eighteen.
Second.
Motion made, seconded, and any further discussion? Seeing none?
Nope.
My screen went blank.
Do you want to? It was like, come back to this?
It was the liquor license that the gentleman came in and he asked for just Sundays or during games of clarification.
That's this one, I believe.
Mine's kind of frozen right now, too.
Yeah, let me just pull it up.
Is it on that was on the twenty-sixth?
Yeah, this is it right here.
Yeah. Twenty-sixth?
Yeah, that's.
Yeah, it just says when. Mr. Lynn, if you wanted, for all the game days, and Mr. Lynn said just the days. I guess it's fine. Something in there bothered me before, but it's fine.
Good, thanks. All right, motion made, seconded, and all those in favor?
Aye. Question on that? Is he reapplying? I felt bad when he left.
Yeah, he's going to reapply. We haven't reached out.
Yeah.
So I don't know what the status is, but I know we haven't reached out.
So that was the last action item for this evening.
Okay. Do Selectmen's Update. One thing I just wanted to let everybody in town aware of, one of our juniors in high school, Matt Sharkey, got selected to go to Boise State a couple of weeks ago over at Stone Hill College. That's a program American Legion puts on, and they teach government, state-level government. The students that go over and do it get elected into different positions. So Matt actually got elected Lieutenant Governor of Boise State, so congratulations to him. He's applying to West Point, Annapolis, several other military academies. So this is one of those things that look great on one of those resumes, and I don't know if he's ever volunteered with you, Jim, but he's done a lot of stuff with me through the years volunteering. He's a top-notch kid, so congratulations to Matt. I don't think I have anything else. Anybody else?
Did you want to talk a little about last night's meeting? Four of you were there, so.
Yeah, I mean, we could. There was a meeting that Jay Barrows put on last night at the new hotel over in what plaza is it?
Foxville Plaza.
Foxville Plaza. Yeah. So it was in regards to the train issue down on County Street. A lot of the residents were there voicing their definite concerns. There's been a lot of change, increased activity. I think it was a fairly good meeting. Jay and Paul and the engineers put a lot of work in to come up with a solution to one of the problems of the trains blocking the intersection, and, you know, they're still working on it. It was a well-run meeting.
They're hoping within a month that that sideline passage will be available for use, which is surprising to me. I think it would be done that quickly, but it's been a long while.
Yeah, surprised by the timing.
Yeah, and just so everybody, the hundreds of thousands of people watching tonight, North Street Railroad Crossing is going to get done this weekend.
This weekend, right.
So North Street's going to be shut down.
That was announced last night.
Friday to Tuesday, I think?
Friday to Tuesday, right.
Yeah.
And Leonard Street was just finished today, this morning.
Yeah.
So that's been done, and also Spring Street's been done. My understanding is that Elm Street and Bird Street, I think, Co-Casket is supposed to be done, I'm not sure if it's this year or next.
I think Roger was saying possibly next year.
Yeah.
They don't have the funding, or they're trying to find.
Yeah, because that's a little more complicated one for that one. And then there's one other one beyond that, but I think they're dressing them on, and they're not cheap to do it. They're like four hundred thousand dollars apiece to do them, but the state is footing that because that is their intersections. So and they're putting them in, they're doing them the right way by putting the concrete crossings in, which really make a lot of sense, and will save a lot of tires. Right, Dave?
I love two.
All right, anybody else have anything for Selectmen's Update? All right, seven-oh-nine and a half, so we can start the seven-ten public hearing.
She's going to need a mic. I don't see them there.
Oh, it's right here, right here. Okay, great. All right, thanks.
Leah, do you want to read the public hearing?
Yes. The Board of Selectmen, acting as the local licensing authority pursuant to MGL Chapter one forty, Section one eighty-one, and Section one eighty-three A, and Chapter one thirty-six, Section four, Code of the Town of Foxborough, Chapter two twenty-nine, and also Stadium Rules and Regulations, will conduct a public hearing on Tuesday, July tenth, two thousand and eighteen, beginning at seven-ten PM in the Gala Meeting Room, Town Hall, Forty Cell Street, to review the application submitted by Craft Sports and Entertainment LLC for Taylor Swift Reputation Stadium Tour. This event is proposed for Gillette Stadium. Application for this event is on file at the Office of the Selectmen. All interested parties are welcome to attend.
Morning, or afternoon?
How excited are we all to be in this building right now and not be able to see all of this?
That's right.
At Gillette Stadium.
George Bell, Stadium Advisory Committee.
So here before you this evening to request a license for Taylor Swift. She will be at the stadium on Thursday, the twenty-sixth, the twenty-seventh, and twenty-eighth. Three shows in a row, which this is the first time that she's done that with us here at the stadium. She actually was the first NFL stadium that she ever played back in two thousand and ten, and these three shows will be her eighth, ninth, and tenth shows with us. So at this point, we have a really good feel for the demographic for what she brings in from a production standpoint, and have our arms very well wrapped around what we can anticipate for these shows. So we're requesting a parking lot time of three o'clock, gate time of five o'clock, and the event is scheduled to start at seven. She has two opening acts, one of which is a really strong one, so we've heard from other venues where she has been playing that they have a really good entry profile. It's nice and early in the day, and they don't see a really late crush of people into the building. As far as attendance goes, the Friday-Saturday shows should be somewhere around fifty thousand. The Thursday show, a little bit less, probably around thirty-seven thousand people in the building. The entire building will be open, though, for all three shows. It'll just look a little bit different on Thursday versus Friday and Saturday. It's a dynamically priced show, more so than any other show that we have ever had at the stadium. We went on sale with these back in early winter, and they were twenty-five price points. So there's, the technology behind dynamic pricing is really, it's nuanced, it's really interesting. It's been interesting for me to see, as I've grown with the organization and been doing this now for thirteen years with them, how different our ticketing operation is now versus what it was ten years ago, or even five years ago. So ticket prices range anywhere from forty-nine fifty up to three fifty, and there are a lot of sort of VIP package elements as well that go for even more than that for these shows. Similar to what we see, we've seen with her in the past, there's a lot of really theatrical elements to this show. So we had an advance team head out and see her show in Arizona, similar-sized building, so we had a good feel for the aesthetic, the overall production setup, and there's just a lot of pyro and ancillary staging, and there's flying, and there's just a ton going on. So the load-in process will be extensive. I think, though, you know, we're certainly comfortable from a production standpoint. We have Uncle Al Production Services, who's been our production manager for, since the beginning of time, it feels like by this point, but Al certainly has his arms around what we are going to anticipate and how to handle it. It does coincide with the first three days of training camp, so from a logistics standpoint, I can tell you we're doing a tremendous amount of planning now to try and ensure that they don't interfere with one another. The good thing is training camp is earlier in the morning, and these events are obviously in the evening, so there's a buffer there, but we'll certainly, we're making provisions and plans for all of the things that we need to anticipate having that many people on-site for both days. Think, it's a standard operation with respect to Uber slash rideshare lots, parent pickup and drop-off, though, again, will be located in the south retail area. We will operate the taxi stand, which will use Putnam Parkway, and that's in the back of Lot Five. People still continue to use it. There's still a significant contingent of people who are just kind of holdouts when it comes to the rideshare concept, so they prefer to wait and use the taxi service, so we'll allow them to do so. Putnam Parkway will be open for, we're requesting it open for, obviously, for emergency vehicles, but also for the select group of VIPs that we typically use it for concerts. So there's, I think, like I said, by this point with Taylor Swift, I think we feel pretty confident that we're prepared to host three successful events again.
George, you want to add in?
I did want to comment that I am, we were impressed as a committee in relation to the Uber and really the three aspects that you're using now, parents, Uber, and all in different areas, taxi. Do you feel you're going to get the MBTA? That's still unsure.
It's still unsure.
Okay.
Unfortunately.
And my only other comment is that they have agreed, and they're going to be communicating with all ticket holders in terms of clear-bag policy, right, the things that make egress, you know, the routes to take. And obviously, you've got, two of the nights are commuter nights, so, you know, Route one gets especially messy, you know, versus Saturday, which it, you know, still is, you know, has the work, but we felt as a committee, we obviously recommend for your board's approval.
Any questions from the board?
Just for the board's education, that this concert, as it just was describing, that the demographic of this group was, is, we rarely have any problems with this crowd. So it's really, it's a good crowd, and probably the one compelling reason why we were able to do and support three shows, because the nature of the crowd. It's a very good crowd, and it's very few problems. It's a younger crowd, but it's a young, family crowd. It's a very family-oriented type show, so you'll see very few challenges with the crowd itself.
It is nice, and it's also nice, too, at this point, they've grown up a little bit, so while there's still, we still do see a large contingent of families and young fans, a lot of her fans at this point have aged up with her, so we've got a lot of young adults in the stadium, which alleviates some of the stress that we had in those first shows where the demographic skewed even younger. So we're looking forward to it.
Does the entertainer set the price point for the tickets?
Yes.
And then, did you say this is the highest-priced one you've ever had?
It's not the highest price. It had the most price points. Typically, we would go on sale with, you know, between four and six different price points in the stadium. This show went on sale with twenty-five.
Oh.
So, yeah, it was a lot. And it went, like I said, all the way from forty-nine fifty up to three fifty, and then those VIP packages get even pricier than that.
There is a general. Right, a general admission area for like three hundred, four hundred people right in front?
Yes, yep. There's a really small GA space, about three hundred and seventy-five people right in the front of one of her B stages. So as you, off of really the main stage, it's not unlike what we see for most acts.
Anybody else have any questions?
No.
Public hearing, anybody in the audience have any questions? Seeing none, do you want to close the public?
All right, move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion made, seconded, to close the public hearing. All those in favor?
All right, move to approve Taylor Swift Concerts on July twenty-sixth, twenty-seventh, and twenty-eighth, two thousand and eighteen.
Second.
Motion made, seconded, and any further discussion?
Just under, I forgot this earlier, but just under general discussion, I don't even know if you're aware, but your group had donated a whole bunch of tickets to one of our youth sport groups.
Mm-hmm.
It was basketball, when they went to, when they won the state championship, so it didn't go unnoticed, but appreciated.
Thank you, yeah. We'll have the girls up on Thursday evening, and they have a suite to themselves, so hopefully they have a nice time.
That's great.
Yeah, that's really great.
All right, motion made, seconded, and there was some discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night, George.
Good night.
We can do the next one because it's not a public hearing. So OJO Realty Investments LLC, Ripple Realty, Answer is Fitness, New Commercial Parking Lot License. You here for that?
Yes.
Do you want to come up to the table? Just have a seat, and just state your name for the record.
Dan Fortier.
How are you, Dan?
Good, how are you?
Good. So you are manager, owner?
General manager, owner, yes.
Okay.
And it's Answer is Fitness.
Okay. Sorry, we started a few minutes early. Yeah, no problem. Just state your name for the record.
Ovar Oswald.
And you are?
The owner of Seven Lincoln Road.
Okay, all right. You looking to do a parking lot for stadium events?
Exactly.
Okay. Did anybody have any questions from, everything looked like it was all in order?
You had gone through the planning board, there was no appeal. Anything unusual that came up at the planning board from the butters, or?
Nope, we did everything through, Bill Buckley, Bay Colony.
Yep. Have you been in here before?
I have not, I have not.
No, this application in past years?
No, no, it was the first year.
So they never did any parking there?
Nope.
Okay.
We came in, when we first took over, we came in here, but Rod had been on the building, and he didn't, he didn't want to do it, so we, we did talk about it, but we never went through the process.
Anybody else have any questions?
Seems in order.
Yeah, everything seems in order.
Just a general question, with the new applicant, Bill, with the new applicant and influx of new parking spaces, how does that work with the equation under the lease agreement? Does it have any effect with other lot owners or number of parking spaces required for a stadium event? We haven't had a new application like this in a while.
Yeah, so what they had to do was they had to first go through the vote of appeals to get a special permit for it, and so they, that was granted, and there was no appeal of that process. So that's where typically we would get that kind of a question, but I have not, I'm not aware of any limitations on that, because this is off-site, it's located off-site.
Yeah, and you're thinking big picture with respect to all the other off-site lot owners?
Yeah.
That have bought into whatever the system is over time. Now, is it the same amount of spaces, people being spread out so they get less? It may not be an issue, but I just haven't had.
I've not had that issue expressed anywhere, but I mean, I appreciate the question, but I, I've not heard that as an issue.
So this would have come up in the special permit discussions?
Right, I would think, you know, because, and part of the fact is that, because they have to actually, because it's not a paved parking lot, correct, or is it?
No, there's two sections. The gravel section was a special permit.
Okay.
The paved area is the regular permit.
Okay, yeah, so you didn't need a special permit for the paved area?
Correct.
And how many spaces are we talking here?
Two hundred.
Two seventy-two.
Seventy-two.
Yeah, the question that just comes up to mind, if all the other lot owners have been part of a process and eventually trace it back to the application for the stadium that they have to have so many off-site parking spaces, now that a couple hundred more are available, does that affect their price point, their permits?
It's an interesting question. I'm not sure.
Yeah, and I don't think there's, there's no, like, you know, fee, you know, to do it, it's per spot, so seven dollars per space, so if you have fifty lots, you're paying that, or if you have two hundred and seventy-two, so I don't think there's any, like, you know, have to put up a bond for a thousand dollars or?
I think, I think what Jim's referring, if I'm not mistaken, you're referring to the economics of it, so, because the economics is spread out over a bigger group now?
Not so much the economics, but in order for the stadium to function, you need X amount of parking spaces. So there's a process that they're all spread out at individual lots. So if everyone decides they're not going to do parking, the stadium doesn't exist for their permit, right?
Right.
So there must be some type of an agreement that only so many parking spaces are going to be available, or is the process, the special permit, that the planning board as a special permit granting authority has that purview to decide economics, lease agreement?
Mm-hmm.
You know, I just want to make sure the left hand knows what the right hand's doing.
Yeah, it's a fair question.
On the lease agreement, it's a minimum, they don't specify a maximum, they only specify a minimum.
Okay.
There's a minimum parking requirement of, for stadium events.
And all those spaces are being utilized, to my knowledge. In fact, if anything, I think over time, there'll be a greater need for more off-site parking if the area develops, as we see, where the plans start to develop.
All right, any other discussion from the board?
Nope. All right, now, move to approve commercial parking license for lot number one oh-two.
Second.
Motion made, seconded, and any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
There you go. Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Yep, good night, guys.
All right, Town Manager's Update.
Just a couple things I was going to mention to you. It was interesting, last night you were talking, last night, Mr. Chairman, about the, why we haven't seen a grand opening for the hotel, and wouldn't you know, today it came out. And nothing to do with that, so it just came out, and timing was everything, but they are planning to do one next Tuesday night at four-thirty, from four-thirty to six, I believe it is, so four-thirty to seven. Four-thirty to seven?
Yeah, the actual ribbon cutting's at four-thirty.
Four-thirty, so the extent that everybody can make it, certainly, you want to see if we can do that. There is, Jim, I think you requested at the last meeting that you wanted to see a notebook pulled together with all the information on the Semerick Project. Yeah, Rob, don't finish this, and he has it available, so we'll maintain this in the office if anybody wants to see it, okay?
No chance that could be electronic, scanned it in? Two volumes?
Yeah, everything's, it's pretty big, but it's, you know, but we'll, we could probably do that. We could probably put it in a Dropbox or something like that, you know, probably do it that way.
Yeah, if you could, that would be, rather than just having to come in the Town Hall and schedule the time.
Sure, yeah, fair enough, yeah. So we'll.
Now, when is that next?
So the next meeting for that is scheduled for June, July twenty-fifth. We're actually planning to have that meeting at Mansfield Town Hall, and it's scheduled for six o'clock that evening. So you might want to put that on your schedules. That'll be the next update for all four towns.
Do you know what time?
Six o'clock. Six to seven, because actually, the Selectmen in Mansfield have a meeting right after that, so we're going to preempt their, preempt their meeting.
Well, you're going to have, you're going to post that anyway, right?
Yes, yeah, we'll absolutely post it. You actually have a meeting, I think, the night before anyway, so I'll remind you that night as well, on the twenty-fourth, so I remind you again that night. We just received notification today that Foxborough residents are invited to the Patriots' two thousand end-stadium practice on July thirtieth, so anybody who's interested in that, and that's, we're going to put that, we put that on our social media events today because there's an electronic process for getting tickets for that this year, so it's a little different from what they've done in the past, so people will have to go online to get access to that.
Yeah, no printed tickets, it says, ask you that.
Right, right, so, and it's just for Foxborough residents, so sort of an exclusive opportunity for Foxborough residents to go see the Patriots' practice, and it's the first week of practice, as I understand it.
And it looks like anyone could just use that code, like, is there anything that actually validates it from Foxborough, or is it, because you know with social media, how those things now kind of get shared?
Yeah, I think that question out to the ticket office as well.
Okay, yeah, it seems like a.
Something like tied to zip code.
Okay, yeah, it seemed, seemed like it could spread like wildfire.
So when there's twenty-five thousand people in the stadium.
Just like, go online and enter this code, yeah.
Something missing right here. Let's see, there was one other thing. Yes, the, so we have, I'm just going to put this for consideration, early consideration, no action taken tonight, but the, it looks as though we may be looking to do a special town meeting in the first, second week in October this year, so it's aligned with the Borough School Project, and things are moving along pretty well. They'll know sometime in August exactly how much they're going to get for reimbursement, but they're pretty close to knowing what that is. We'll obviously start our process, but we have to start our process for a town meeting early, obviously, because there's a lot of planning goes on with that. So we'll be getting, we're just, I just talked to Bill Euken today about that, and he said the timing would be probably the first, second week in October. So just want to let everybody be aware of that, so we'll probably take it up for consideration potentially at the next meeting on the twenty-fourth. So I just want to.
Yeah, you're going to, if you want to do it that early in October, you're going to have to get going on it.
You'll have to get going on it sooner, all right, so. We already covered the rail crossing issue, so just want to make sure there's anything else. It's, Vicki Lowe's retirement party is this Friday, it's a luncheon, actually, it's at one-thirty at the, at Lakeview Pavilion, and we are working on Vicki's retirement, Vicki's replacement, actually. We've started that process, and we're in the interview stages, we've already done telephone interviews, and we're looking to do in-person interviews over the next week or two. I think, we do have, we've been working on some unaccepted street issues, just to let everybody know, we had, we've had problems, what we call the Fairbanks Road, we've been working with that neighborhood, and also with the folks at Camp Road, to see if we can, is there any way we can try to address some of the issues with them, and we've been meeting with them to try, and we're going to do actually a tour, which I probably won't be able to go to next week, and, but that's, we're trying to work with them and find out if we come up with some solution. This past week, we had the Leadership Academy for the youth, for the, through the FBI program, and that seemed to go very, very well. It was put on with the assistance of Chief Baker and some of his chiefs from Massachusetts, coordinated an effort, and there was about twenty-five or thirty students that were involved in that leadership program, and it was, it was very successful. And, and that aligned with the fact that he just had the group of two Haitian police officers here, which was quite, quite interesting, it was unfortunate we couldn't get them here to actually come before your meeting, because it was sort of a limited timeframe, but, but they were, they were, they were great. I only got to meet them for like a few minutes, but, but they were very, very interesting for us, so it's good to see that. That's all I have.
All right, Mary Beth's on vacation?
She's on vacation, and hoping that she'll be a grandmother any day now, again, for number two, so.
All right, that's it for the regular meeting.
All right, so do I move to executive session?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, move to, close the meeting and move into executive session. For the purchase, for the, to consider the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of the real property identified on Foxborough Assessor's Map seventy-nine as parcel two-twenty-two, two, Twenty-One Market Street, two-two-two-four, and two-two-two-five. As an open meeting may have a detrimental effect to the negotiation position of the town, the board will not reconvene in open session.
Roll call vote.
Okay, roll call vote, do I?
I'll second, first.
Motion made, second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
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 Good night, everybody.
Are you accusing yourself?
Yes.
Recusing yourself from the discussion?
Well, you get to go home.
No, I have something else I have to do.
Good night, everybody.
All right, good night.